Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Titusville City Council meeting on October 22, 2019 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. If you will join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please read the procedures for public speaking.
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-dedicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues and citizens will be given three minutes on all items.
Thank you, Clerk. Next item is approval of minutes. We have no minutes this evening, so next item is special recognition and presentations. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Mayor and City Council, we'd like to recognize Mr. David Jordan of the Community Development Department as our Employee of the Month for September 2019, and Ms. Bisaka will come forward and let us know why we're recognizing David.
Hello. It's my pleasure to tell you just a few of the things that David does as our GIS analyst in the Community Development Department. He comes to the city with several years of experience as GIS lead for both Brevard County and the Property Appraisers Office, so we're very privileged to have someone with that level of experience. In the past year, Dave has applied his skills to enhance the city's online interactive map to help the department streamline its processes. He's helped to create printable zoning maps that allows the staff to print their own maps without going to the GIS. He also has helped create digital mailing notice applications so that we can do that work again without going to the GIS staff who are very busy with other items. He's assumed a leadership role in the Brevard User Group. They call that BUG, which I think says something about them. And he's organized an annual event for local municipal and county GIS users. He was invited to present the city's online GIS map at the Southeast GIS Users Conference in West Palm Beach, and I have been with many people who do development throughout the state, and they're very impressed with the level of GIS that's available on our website that they can go to. Dave is not the only person who's worked with that. Mariana is here tonight, and several other, including Kenny Lor, have helped with that, but that's a tremendous asset. Dave collaborated with the GIS specialist Kenny Lor on a project to reorganize the city's GIS data, which has made it much easier to find, to eliminate redundant records, and we have a much more highly organized system of spatial data that is easier to retrieve and manage. I'm happy to say that sentence. Dave will have to explain it to you. Dave is an outstanding employee. He's a valuable member of the Planning Division, and we are grateful to have him with us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, George. We appreciate it. We have one of these.
Again? Thank you. You have to come here.
We're ahead.
Thanks, Dave. You do a great job.
There you go.
Yes, sir. We'd like to recognize Shane Daly and Curtis Corman from the Community Relations Department as Employees of the Month for 2019, and I think Jim Thomas is going to read the narrative.
Evening, Council. I'm Jim Thomas, Community Relations. I'm going to read a little bit about Curtis and Shane. It says a lot of information here, and I kind of boiled it down a little bit so we could get through the meeting, but I'm very proud of the two gentlemen for the work that they've done over the past year, and I'll just get right into this, and as we go along, it kind of explains exactly what we're talking about. As a result of ongoing litigation throughout the country, Curtis and Shane had to teach themselves to identify non-compliant ADA website documents and just as quickly start reproducing them as ADA compliant. Simultaneously, they assisted city staff to remediate their respective sites and/or do it for them. In addition, they gave several classes on the hows and whys of ADA compliance and provided a list of recommended tools for city staff. In fact, one of the first classes, Shane taught that, and I picked him purposely because I wanted to see how well he did in front of a crowd. Needless to say, I didn't like it. He was a lot better than I am, so he did a really good job. The entire process that we did was documented and dated on a daily basis and sometimes hourly basis, and it was deemed very useful. Here's a summary of the process. Taught themselves how to use software called Monceta to scan for ADA errors on thousands of pages of websites. So when we're talking about this, we're talking in the thousands, not 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, but thousands of pages. Taught themselves to use a screen reader, the same as a sight impaired person would do, and in one of the city classes showed the staff the challenge, complete with a blindfold. Now, I did get a little grief from Virginia downstairs. She goes, "What are you buying?" Because I had to buy a blindfold for that little class, but the idea is you can navigate through a website with your keyboard, so we want to make sure that the person, the guinea pig, could not see. Reduced the number of non-compliant PDS from 2,500 to zero. Any remaining PDS have an alternative accessible version. Scanned and provided assistance placing alt text on every image on the website. What that means is when you run a cursor or your keyboard goes through it, it tells you what that's a picture of. Repaired and remediated several years of annual budgets, hundreds of pages of city pension documents, close to 50 budget amendments. And just for those who are not to know, somebody that actually has an ADA digital compliance officer, mainly what they do, they're kind of a gatekeeper. They make sure things like this don't get on the website, but these guys actually went in there and were remediating all these documents, and it was quite a process. In addition to the above process, they implemented closed captioning hardware software device for the city's broadcasts, and that is a page all in itself, but we won't go into that, but that was ongoing at the same time. Part of what made the process difficult was there was no existing off-the-shelf hardware or software that could be used to make the website compliant. This was totally a research project. Solutions were often by trial and error. The seminars we attended used multiple resources or tools just to make one document compliant, so there was no button you could push or anything like that. There were letters written to the Attorney's General's office trying to get information on what ADA compliance was. That was never obtained, so it was basically all new to all the cities and counties. As a result of those efforts, many if not all issues listed in ADA compliant were identified as not existing on the website at the time of the complaint, previously remediated or never part of the website. In other words, they belong to another website, not even the city's. Many cities and counties were cited and were given up to two years to remediate their respective websites. These guys did it in a quarter of that time, and they're still improving it, so it was quite a job well done because some of the cities were cited some time ago, and they're still working through a lot of that. But I'd like to introduce Curtis Corwin and Shane Daly. Oh, and by the way, Shane told me he was having trouble sleeping tonight. He was so worried about this. But you can see he's a millennial, and I think he's a gamer. That's probably what was keeping him awake, right?
Curtis.
Guys, I think I speak for the entire council. We know you've done a good job, and you do back here for us at meetings and so forth, but this was incredible. The amount of time you fellas spent organizing and educating yourselves is just way beyond anything I've even seen before. Done in this amount of time, and you've accomplished so much and kept aside a lot of problems. Thank you very much for what you did. Does he know how to work that?
I think so.
That's yours, isn't it?
We tried to teach him.
We tried. All right, Bruce Ball. Well, actually, laughing at you.
I gotta get the picture. Let me pour your jacket.
Next, letters of appreciation.
Yes, sir. We're on Agenda 5B, and I'd like to read for the record the letters of appreciation that were received for the following employees. From the Public Works Department, Daniel Alfonso, Mike Richards, Mike Walker, and from our Fire Department, Scott Einkauf, Sean Fisher, Matt Johnson, and Ron Smith.
Boards and Commissions.
Yes, sir. The terms of the regular members, Roz Foster, Brevard County Historic Preservation Committee, Non-Resident Alan Kiesel, Non-L licensed Architect, Non-Resident Joseph Adams, Historian, Work Experience Only Resident, and William Matt Gekins, Non-L licensed Engineer, Non-Residents. Terms are scheduled to expire on October 31, 2019. Regular members Foster, Kiesel, Adams, and Gekins have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for another two-year term, expiring October 31, 2021. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Much pleasure. Right ahead.
I'm not sure if they're here or not. If they are here, it would be good to hear from them. If they aren't, I'll make a motion.
This gentleman is here?
Okay.
Your name and address, sir?
My name is Joseph Adams. I'm the Secretary for the Board, and we've had a very productive time with the city of Titusville. It started out with putting out a couple -- we've essentially rewrote the Historic Preservation Ordinance for the city of Titusville to help with the attorneys. Chelsea, Chelsea did an awful lot of work on that, and then she came back every time we've asked for clarification, and so the Attorney's Office has been great. The Planning Office provides us with a lot of times two members of their staff, so that's been great, but we've managed to come out with a couple of brochures to help the people of Titusville. Brief Guide to the Local Designations, a Tax Incentive brochure, and then the golden one, the Titusville Historic Landmarks. We have 12 locally designated landmarks here in the city of Titusville. There's about five National Register. Some of them, they overlap, but there are five National Register properties here in the city of Titusville. Now, what will surprise a lot of people is National Register, it's a nice title, but it doesn't do hardly anything. The local register through our Historic Preservation Ordinance helps us to protect those 12 structures. Gives us some, not heavy teeth, but some teeth to control them. And we also, in the process of doing our job, have helped Titusville to become a certified local government, which has some advantages tax-wise and other ways, and we can get some grants that way. I will be happy to answer any questions about the board. I can tell you that the other three members that you mentioned are outstanding people, and Chairman Kiesel is amazing, so.
I think they put one of the brochures in each of our. I think they. Well, I think they put one of the brochures in each of our mailboxes, and it was truly a really nice piece. I hope people will pick it up and start looking at those residences, those buildings.
It goes a little beyond just the residence. It talks a little about some of the other historic areas. One last point for us. Every year, we have done a preservation workshop. I missed the last one, but it was done at the Moore Center, and we were concentrating on more local residents, but not the fancy houses, the more vernacular. And there were about 35 people actually signed up for it, signed the sheet coming in, and we believe there were about 50 people who actually attended, so it's. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Much pleasure.
Okay. I'd move to reappoint Roz Foster, Alan Kiesel, Joseph Adams, and Matt Gekins to the Historic Preservation Board.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes. Passes unanimously.
Agenda Item 6B, Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Currently, there is one vacancy for a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on July 31, 2021. There's one application on file for your consideration, Mr. Richard Wheelis of the Building Trades Industry. Mr. Wheelis has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board for an expired term to expire on July 31, 2021. In addition, Mr. Wheelis has also expressed his willingness and desire to serve on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. The appointment for the Municipal Code Enforcement Board is being considered at this meeting as your next agenda item.
I want to make a comment on this, although Mr. Wheeler was kind enough to ask to allow us to choose either one. I want to say that we have a unique situation here, as Mr. Wheelis is totally knowledgeable after how many years of working? If you will come up, sir. On the code enforcement, not on the.
I worked for the city for 24 years, retired four and a half years ago as the Director of the Building Department, and worked closely with the Code Enforcement Board and the BAA, both throughout my tenure.
So I think he would be better suited because of his background on the second board and I'm sorry. Municipal Enforcement Board, because he has so much knowledge with it, he can hit the deck running, so I believe it's. Go right ahead.
My thought was the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I've always found Mr. Wheelis as a very fair person, and I think he would bring a balance to that board, which would be nice, and that's a board that we're always having problems finding people for. So for me, I'd rather see him on Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I don't know how you feel about it.
I will serve where you see fit to put me, seriously. I know there's a need in both cases.
Well, I was trying to figure out a way to make you do both.
Well, if I could be an alternate to one and permanent to the other, I can do that, if that helps.
Mr. Brown's standing there shaking his head at me.
We'd love to see you do that.
We tried.
But I would also say that certainly he has more experience with the code board, and that's a difficult board to fill as well because it takes a unique background to get on it, so I'll.
Well.
Any other discussion? Oh, we have a light lit. Are you through? You can continue.
I can continue.
Certainly.
Okay. My thought was that we should appoint Mr. Wheelis to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, that we appoint the two current members back to the Municipal Code Enforcement Board, but I think I would like to see us consider maybe a magistrate for the Code Enforcement Board, but it's something that we need to give direction to the staff. We need to look at it, and I would want the staff to have a conversation with members of the Code Enforcement Board and get their input into this. I don't want to blindside them, and last time I sort of felt like we blindsided them. So I think it would be a good time to sit down and say, what do we want to do, and what is it going to cost, and what is more efficient? I will tell you, I talked to a friend of mine who's Assistant County Attorney, and they've been using a magistrate for a while, I think 20 years. I think Richard said 20 years. They love it. We had a discussion, if you have a good magistrate, you're good. If you don't have a good magistrate, you might be in a pickle, but you may have to go through a termination process, but it's something that at least we ought to look at, so that was my long-term thought.
I totally agree with you on that thought, and let's hear it from some other council people, but that's a very good thought, too. The magistrate, and that would require staffs coming back with an advisement. Member Jordan?
Well, Member Nelson actually spoke what I was thinking, and I didn't want to put you. You've got an aura about you, by the way. I don't think I know you. I've heard your name before. We have? Oh, I'm sorry.
The guy with the aura.
Was I nice?
You had some milting issues.
I've got a lot of issues, that's for sure.
It was a very positive experience.
Was it? Okay. I appreciate you saying that, but even though we're not on 6C, I really would love to see you on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. I do think that there is some challenges that we have on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board, and I don't want to put you on there if council decides to go in a different direction. Don't want to lose you for sure, and I think you've got a lot of wisdom for sure, so if there's going to be a motion, I certainly would second that motion to have you on the board.
Well, you're going to be on one or the other. It's just a matter of which one.
I'm going to wait over here.
Stay right there.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
We've got a lot on our plate right now, all of a sudden. I was doing my best to figure out, you know, what board he should be on, and I'm kind of listening to you guys wanting to hear him because it sounds like six one way, half a dozen the other, so I just really want to go with the flow and make it work. If that's going to help us to put him on Adjustments and Appeals because of some other possibilities with code enforcement, that may be the better move, although I don't have a preference either way, to be honest with you. I just want to put him where he can best serve. Just to throw out there a little bit of what you already said, I think there is thought of magistrate with the code enforcement, but I also agree that we would want to make sure that they had input and that the staff gave us an advisement, and it's spoken to them, you know, prior to any advisement that we get, get an idea where they're coming from. But I do say, and I wasn't aware of this until recently, it seems as though magistrates is more how people do code enforcing now than with all the boards, so I'm very interested in looking at that and getting an advisement on that, but again, making sure that they're involved in the decision as we move forward. Now, we've got to figure out what to do with this young man who is so qualified.
I think we've.
Mayor, we do have a card on this item. Calling to interrupt your preparation, but.
Is it Richard Wheeler's?
Yes, sir. It's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I just want to reinforce what you're saying, the good things you're saying about Rich Wheelis. I worked with him for years, and he rose in the ranks. He's been through a lot, and he's very competent, and I'm very pleased to see that he's continuing his service to the community. So thank you to Richard, and whichever you choose with him, he'll do well. Give him the hardest job you can is what I think is best. Thank you.
That brings us to a motion.
Do it. Yeah. Yeah.
It's a hard decision here. It's, it's a hard decision here, and it's because you're so good, Richard. About that. And my, my, I, I can't disagree with what you're saying, although that, we don't know what's going to happen in the future with that board. So I'll leave it up to whoever wants to make the, the motion, and that's for you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we appoint Mr. Richard Wheelis to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for the term to expire on July the first, two thousand and twenty-one.
I have a motion and a second. Is there something you wanted to say? Just take, okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir. Thank, thank you for being willing to work with us. Next item?
Next item is Agenda Item six C, Municipal Code Enforcement Board. The terms of regular members Larry Edwards, Masonary subcontractor, and Edward Muniz, open classification, expire on October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Both these individuals have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for another three-year term to expire on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Two additional applications are in file for your consideration, Mr. Richard Wheelis and William Kilpatrick, who currently serves on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals as an alternate member public at large with a term to expire on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. He has expressed a willingness and desire to serve on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board as a regular member, open classification for three-year term, scheduled to expire on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, or as an alternate member, open classification with an unexpired term, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. If Mr. Kilpatrick is not appointed to the Municipal Code Board, he will continue to serve on the BAA. However, if appointed to the code board, staff is requesting Mr. Kilpatrick. Appointment dates become effective on November first, two thousand and nineteen, in order to allow him to continue to serve on BAA through October thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
We do have one other person who has an application in, for some time now. And on the application, it says he, he would consider other things. Mr. Lee, could you come up for a moment, please? Yes. I know you have an application for the T E C, and we, we'd love to have you on that. But you also are an engineer.
Yes.
Which would qualify you for, for this application. Would you consider that?
Yes.
Okay. So we have another, another application then to consider. It's all right, sir. We'll, we'll call you back if, if necessary.
Mayor, there, there are really no qualifications for code enforcement. I think what you were thinking of was B A, who had specific qualifications for that.
Okay. I thought there were for this one, too.
Well...
Yeah.
I would point out, it's requirement as stated, but for Municipal Code Enforcement Board, there's a seven regular member and two alternate member board that includes, whenever possible, an architect, a businessman, an engineer, general contractor, subcontractor, and realtor. So there really is to be an effort to have one of those trades on there, whenever possible.
On this board?
Yes, sir. The other board, as referenced by City Manager, is, it shall have those disciplines.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Yeah. As stated, Board of Adjustments and Appeals...
No, not the whole thing, just the last sentence.
Require, I'm just saying, the difference is that when it shall have. With Code Enforcement Board, it's whenever possible, you shall have an architect, businessman, engineer, general contractor, a subcontractor, and a realtor.
So again, we can, we can consider you for this one. All right. Anybody want to start the...
It wouldn't, Muniz is not here?
Yeah, but his, his application is in, correct?
Right. He's currently a serving member, yes, sir. As long as, as well as Mr. Edwards.
Well, I'm certain Mr. Muniz would be a primary person who's already...
No, I just wanted to meet him. I just wanted to know who he was.
Okay. But that withstanding, I, I will still repeat that he is serving, and generally, we give those the first consideration. And then there is another one after that, which we have to look at.
Okay.
Much pleasure. Or what do you oppose?
I guess I'm curious if the, I know Mr. Edward, Edwards is here. I don't know if Mr. Mona, Muniz, or Mr. Kirkpatrick are here? And if they want to speak?
Any of you gentlemen wish to speak?
I don't think any of them are here.
None of them are here?
Right.
Then they can't speak if they're not here. It's kind of obvious. Okay. Does anybody want to? I can't make the motion yet. Oh, here, somebody came up. Vice Mayor?
So just for clarification, the regular members are, are wanting to stay. Meaning that they would, so what we could simply do is motion to maintain those members, because if we do anything different, then that means we're going to remove somebody, correct?
Well, you don't have to remove them. They just wouldn't get appointed, reappointed. Their appointments are coming, coming up.
Okay. When you're not reappointed, you're kind of removed. So anyway... Okay. I just wanted to get that clarification before we hear further discussion. I, I've heard, you know, nothing, unless there's something I don't know that would indicate that we'd want to move on. And if, if there is something out there, I don't know that.
And it would seem that we have the two people who are already on there, and we need two alternates, correct? So we need four people total, and we have four people.
Correct. The terms of the regular members, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Muniz, expire as well as two alternate member positions that are vacant with unexpired terms to expire on October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
I, I'm going to add in something that is, I hate to do. But have any, have any of you seen the, not the last P and Z, but the one before that, where...
P and Z or code?
Uh, code enforcement, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Where Mr. Edwards was present for the first time?
I did not see it.
His positions and attitude were extremely unusual for someone coming on a new board. And I have to say, he spoke with disrespect to some of our staff.
Okay.
And that's the reason I would like to see Mr. Lee appointed.
Well, Mr. Lee does have the qualifications.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, Mr. Edwards is present. I don't know if he wants to speak.
If he'd like to speak, I please, please do so.
But I, I don't want to see anybody particularly disrespectful to our staff. I mean, we can disagree without being disrespectful.
I understand.
You know?
It's very unusual for somebody that just got on the board to take those, that kind of position. And so, just my opinion.
Okay. I understand. I understand. What about Mr.? I did not see the last meeting. I did not watch it. What about Mr. Muniz? Muniz?
I see no problem with this.
It was Muniz. Yeah. I'm sorry. If you don't mind, can you remind me of who is already on the board that's being reappointed? I'm trying to find it on here, and I don't see it.
Mr. Edwards and Mr. Muniz.
Yes. Okay. And then we got two alternates, right?
And we have Mr. Lee being considered.
Okay. The new one, right here. So who was it that you just said was disrespectful?
Edwards.
Okay. So why don't I make a, I'm sorry, can I make a motion?
You may. Oh, wait, wait a minute. She still has to pull.
Oh, I, I'll give it afterwards.
Okay.
Mr. Jordan?
Okay. I got it.
I, I move that we appoint Mr. Muniz and Mr. Lee to the board? God, you want everything, don't you? Can we do that and then do the alternates afterwards?
You can. Well...
Okay. So I'll, I'll do that as the two permanent members.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I, I'm not sure where the alternate came in, the discussion. No, ma'am. It's the two vacancies. Two vacancies.
Okay. Those are the two vacancies there.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want to clarify, the clerk, the, the Mr. Lee, is his app, is his application for this board as well as another board? I understand.
He had just T E C on this, on his application.
I just wanted to, I want to clarify one point. You know, under two fifty-two of the Code of Ordinances, persons wishing to be considered for appointments shall file with the clerk's office a statement of their interest and comply with two fifty-one no later than five days prior to the meeting in which the appointment is scheduled. So my question is, is, am I interpreting that he's applied his application for this board five days prior to the appointment for this board?
His application says he is willing to serve on any other board we would...
That was my question for the clerk, is...
Oh, okay.
Hang on, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Why is this so hard?
Boards preferred states environmental and city environmental commission.
But the check on the bottom, what does that say?
Where's he looking?
So... No, that's a, that's not the one. His application? You have his application? The one that says we...
Yes, sir. It's in your packet under the Titusville Environmental Commission. It's item six D. His application is there for the T E C.
Looked like the bottom line is based on our rules, he doesn't qualify, because he didn't put it on his application. Correct? Mr. Attorney? Put it on you.
But he, he, I mean, you are taking into account that he agreed to be called for any other board? I'm still looking. What, what page is that on?
Page seventy.
I'm going to dig one out.
Is that right?
Correct. If council is interested in appointing him to the code board as an engineer, you can certainly table that appointment to your next meeting. And if he wants to follow the paperwork, you could consider it then.
Okay. All right.
So can we appoint one and then table the second one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any further discussion?
And we'll table this to the next regularly scheduled meeting, the first meeting in November.
Yes, sir. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Same like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
We are on Agenda Item six D. Thomas Perez currently serves as an alternate member with a term expired on thirty November two, two thousand and twenty-one. And has expressed his willingness to serve as a regular member for a term to expire on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. In addition, alternate member Perez would like to continue to serve as an alternate member if he is not appointed as a regular member. Jeffrey Solomon currently serves as an alternate member with a term to expire on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. However, he does not wish to be considered as a regular member at this time. And then you have Mr., Mr. Lee, that you've already discussed, is also applied for this position.
Okay. Much pleasure.
Um... My thoughts are Tom Perez has been serving on the commission. So I would like to see him become a regular member. The person that didn't make the list originally is a guy named William Young, who is the Director of the Solar Energy Commission. And I would suggest Mr. Young as the alternate.
Motion.
Basically, he takes Mr. Perez's spot.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, we got this on the die. Is, was this an add-in? Was it in on time? It was?
Yes.
I, I, I brought it in.
Oh, you brought it in?
I brought it in about eight, nine months ago.
We'll, we'll explain what happened here.
Okay.
This particular application was received almost a year ago when we were considering T E C appointments at that time. My staff actually looked at that application with the date of January, which is what the date is stamped, because we only contact it as an application if they're less than a year old. However, we did receive that application in November. So he should have been contacted.
Yeah.
But he was not.
Okay. I'm good with that.
If you look at the application, I'm sorry. If you look at the application itself, in the upper right-hand corner, you see the date of one, three, eighteen. And then you see the date that we received it as November fifth, two thousand and eighteen, which is the stamp above that.
Is there a motion?
That's by motion?
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously. Mr. Lee, you will be considered at the next meeting for the other position. Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Mayor, can I revisit the Municipal Code Enforcement Board item for a second? My understanding is you have tabled the reappointment of Mr. Edwards until the next meeting. Technically, according to this report, his term would expire October thirty-first. So I would suggest that he, that be continued until your next meeting. So if they happen to have a code meeting, he will serve until you address this at your next meeting.
Correct.
Need a motion on it?
That's just clarification from you that it will not expire as stated. It'll continue until you make a decision at your next meeting.
Okay. Fair enough. Next item? Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. We... It's so hard. Jeez. We kind of discussed that we would like for advisability with staff as, as far as the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. So I would ask that council agree that we ask staff to look into the special magistrate for that and bring back results. Also, talk to the, uh...
Yes.
The board now to see what their position is.
Everybody agree with that?
Is there any specific information you would like in the advisability?
Yeah. The pros and cons of having a magistrate versus continuing what we're doing now.
Comparing other places in this area?
Yeah, of course. Look at other, God, I didn't have to go in detail. Yeah. Go to other counties and municipalities and see what they're doing and what the results is.
You want the cost also?
Okay. And the cost, too. Anything else I want?
I missed that one.
Jeez. How amazing.
I think we got all the bases.
Yeah, I think so.
So I have a, a very good motion, if I'm accurate. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to add, and I think it's all part of it, because I think we all want to know, and I kind of mentioned when we were talking, that it seems to be a move towards the magistrate. I'd like to know what kind of numbers have changed in the last ten years from boards to magistrates. Is it a trend that we're seeing? And, and again, then, of course, we want to see how that's working. So not, not much of a change, but...
You know, yeah, so you can include that. I mean, that's included.
Everything is included.
Okay.
Oops.
So we, we are through with that item, I hope. And so next item is petitions and requests from the public present. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? Microphone's over there? No, I guess not. Bye, gentlemen. Anybody like to speak? Name and address for the record, sir.
Michael Myjack, forty-four twenty Alpine Lane in the beautiful city of Titusville.
Good evening, sir.
And hoping to keep it that way for many, many years to come. I'm going to be speaking on, on, on item nine B later on, so this has nothing to do with that. What I do, did, and have noticed is that there seems to be a systemic problem with regards to environmental review. And I'll, I'll just get right to the point. In our, in our charter, our charter specifically...
our charter specifically talks to Section thirty-one dash one twenty-one for the powers and duties of the Titusville Environmental Commission. And it says, "We shall study general environmental conditions in and surrounding the city of Titusville and make specific recommendations to city council regarding the environmental effects of existing conditions, future and public development projects." That doesn't happen. "Subjects of particular environmental and water resource concern." That hasn't happened. "And issues regarding environmental sustainability in order to improve information available to city council in their decision-making role." That's what we want to do. So, you have to look at it from my perspective. How is it you could not have had a tree assessment, a tree survey for the property that you're approving in a sketch plat? How could you not have any environmental information in your packet? Who's reviewing that environmental commission? Packet, excuse me. I think the environmental commission should be responsible for reviewing these packets for the environmental impact that they have on the city of Titusville. So, I hope you will so empower us and have staff direct the environmental commission to become part of the loop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mijak. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So, Mike, that's in there right now, the ordinance?
Yes.
Then the question is, how do we implement that to make sure that you have, have the information?
Well, I, all I can tell you is that we have not been included in any assessments of any properties coming for development. Now, certainly, any development property is going to impact the environment.
Correct.
Somebody has to be responsible for that. And right now, we don't have anybody responsible. Nobody's looking at that excessive developer. So, who's looking out for the citizens of Titusville?
So, how do we do that?
Well, that's, that's not up to him.
That's not up to me.
He's making the suggestion.
I'm making that suggestion, but I'm saying.
Well, I'm suggesting that maybe staff would like to comment on that. Mr. Saka, if you will. If you can give us your experience, not necessarily with Titusville, but in other areas.
I'm not quite sure exactly what Mr. Mijak was referring to. Right now, the sketch plat process specifically has a list of items that are required. In my memory, a tree survey is not required. Now, council has told us as part of the tree protection ordinance that that should be included. So, that will happen. The, after the sketch plat, which right now, the code requires, goes to P and Z and then council. So, that would require, I believe, because that specific process is laid out, that if you want that sketch plat to go to TEC, then that should be amended, which can be done easily. The next process that gets done after sketch plat for a subdivision is preliminary plat. That's strictly an administrative process.
Okay.
That is not brought to any board. The final plat is then after the construction of the development itself, that final plat happens. And that is really based on state statute and the requirement that before a final plat can be approved, that this body must approve it. But by that time, they, typically, the development is completed except for the homes.
Okay.
So, that is something that, that's why the sketch plat was created, to allow input at the beginning of the process as opposed to after it's completed. The preliminary plat used to come to council. But that is very technical and is, and is an engineering requirement. And what council found was when they would make suggestions, someone would say, "Wait a second. We've just spent a hundred thousand dollars engineering this. You should have told us that sooner." So, they moved the sketch plat process up.
So, it sounds like there's a conflict in the ordinances.
Well, I think that the TEC ordinance is very broad.
Okay.
And that the, the policies and procedures related to development are much more specific. So, if council wants to change that, we could certainly bring back some language or options for you to look at. When it comes to site plans, again, that is an administrative process. And that is how it is laid out in the code. So, neither, the site plan does not come to any board or commission. Now, when it comes to planning and zoning, then that, again, for a planning and zoning, a comp plan, those all go to planning and zoning. And now, you have a appointee that is going to be on both the TEC and planning and zoning. So, if this is what council wants, then we need to be told that so that the code can be amended as such.
I would like us to have some input from the environmental commission because, you know, when I look at, I'm going to say this, Brookshire, and I realize I swore I wouldn't use that word tonight. But when I look at the tree that, that's being taken down, and I'm like, wow, there, there had to be a different way. And none of us knew about it. And so, I'm sort of thinking if it went through T, or TEC has some kind of input in it, into it, it would be helpful for us.
I agree with that. However, until the sketch plat requires a tree survey.
Right.
You're still not going to get the information they want. So, it would be better if council could tell us exactly what it is they wanted to accomplish so we knew exactly what it is we need to amend. Because every day, the staff gets asked by a developer, "Show me that in the code."
Yeah.
And then we have to admit it was a bluff. And we have to fold. And that's how it goes.
I hate balding.
Well, that's how it goes. And we can do it two or three times. And then eventually, they read it. And then we say, "Oh, you okay, you caught us." So, that's what you've been asked us to do, is to strengthen that code. And if that's what includes sending someone else to, something else to TEC, then we should put that in the code.
So, it would be for me, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I would like to see suggestions coming back from staff, how to, how to involve TEC, how to give some weight to the ordinance we have. Because right now, we're just ignoring it.
Well, I promised you that we'd have it to you by January, and we will.
Okay. If I quit adding things?
No, ma'am. I promise you, something's going to happen in January, so it will.
Okay.
It may not be everything you want if you keep adding things. But I promise you, you will get something to review. In fact, we're starting at the next meeting. We will be talking about allowing pervious pavement to be used citywide because that was an easy win, and we promised you we'd do those first. So, we are starting this process even as we speak to allow that.
I will say, bless you, Peggy.
It's not me by myself.
Okay.
So, what, are you through?
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, but I'm going to jump in. What I'm hearing is that you can see from what we talked about tonight, this is kind of an advisability we're asking you for. And you, we should probably table the issue until January?
No, sir, it's just that what we can do is we can bring back to you something that you could, to give you some options and some input on this.
Which is an advisability.
Well, and then you can decide, and we'll meanwhile, continue on the ordinance that we've been already told to do. And then if it, something will happen in January. And if this takes a little longer, then we'll make this one of those little longers. If it's easy to do, which it seems to me it probably is, then it can go with the rest of that.
Mr. Mayor, I think there's a little confusion. What Mr. Busaka's talking about is the tree ordinance. And I believe what Member Nelson is talking about is an advisability to take a look at what goes before the TEC or what doesn't go before the TEC.
We're trying to get all that information
Well, I think.
back. And I'm not, do we have to divide it into? Actually, I think she.
The tree ordinance that we're working on is ongoing.
Yeah.
And Ms. Busaka has indicated that she will have that before council in January.
Okay.
We have no action whatsoever to take a look at TEC right now.
Well, okay, can I object?
I'll let you continue.
I sort of, what I heard Ms. Busaka saying was that the tree ordinance needed to come first. But at the same time, depending on how much work it might take, we could at least look at that perhaps.
I'll just take one item, the sketch plat. We're coming back to you and saying we should put a tree survey in the sketch plat.
Right.
Now, if you tell us you also want to include the TEC in the sketch plat process, that can come back at the same time. But that's not all development.
Okay.
That's one simple part of the plating process. So, that's why I said that some of these are administrative, don't have any input from any boards or commissions.
Right.
One of the things that makes a difference in a, in a community for a developer and for the community is certainty. One way to have certainty is to put it in the code so that people can pick it up and understand what the expectation is. So, the administrative processes are code-driven. And there, there's a lot more certainty in that because you already know what the code is. So, the more things that we put in there with a reasonable amount, the more certainty there'll be in the development process.
And I think the developers would appreciate that.
And so will the community because they'll know what to expect when a development comes in.
Okay. I think we're straight.
Do you, do you have enough information?
I will put something on an upcoming agenda, and we'll see if I'm a good guesser.
I don't know how to put that into it. Is everybody agreed to that methodology? Oh, you, you still have to speak, sir. Yes, you go right ahead.
The first thing, my first thought was when I'm hearing this from Mr. Mijak is we're adding bureaucracy to a process. There are requirements that we have. What he suggested was we're missing the vote when it comes down to the requirements that you have in TEC. My suggestion is that we're really not with the sketch plan at all. We have a process that we're following. I would just suggest that council needs to be real careful about adding more process steps to a developer who's trying to get something done. We're going to protect the environment. We're going to do the right thing. To go to another committee really irks me as a developer, really irks me as a person when I'm trying to get something done. Because when you do that, it's going to end up costing me more money to develop a piece of property, I guarantee you. And some of the stuff is very subjective. When you've got someone who is very into the environment, then there's going to be some, "I like this. I want this in this development." And if we don't be careful, we're just going to cause that development to just going to be higher in price. Environment is good, but I think we have enough processes in place. In my mind, if we start something new, then we need to get rid of something. That's the only way that we're going to get away from all this bureaucracy. So, yeah, we can have an advisability. But my, my heart tells me that we need to really be careful about how much more we're going to add to the process of getting something developed. I'm not sure how often the TEC meets. Once a month or?
Once a quarter now.
Once a quarter, so here we go, you know?
Mr. Mijak is exaggerating. We had a storm, and then we had.
Next season?
We had a storm, and then we had to reschedule a meeting to a Wednesday night so that this spot was not available to hold the TEC meeting. So, and then their speaker had to cancel. So, they have had several meetings in a row, but not because they are being ignored, but because events overtook their scheduling.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I had heard previously, actually, at your, the last meeting, I think you had noted how, and I think it was a little bit tongue-in-cheek. But at the same time, it's, it's been very difficult to have meetings. And you're not having a lot of meetings. So, as I was listening, and I was definitely wanting to listen and hear, hear where we're going with this. You know, my first thought was adding another committee to a committee does get to be a problem. And it immediately came to me that you're, you're, you're struggling to meet. The second thing is, though, you had noted that, you know, we'd like to have that input before we get too far along. So, I'd kind of like to find a happy middle in there that doesn't necessarily involve having another committee's approval or another committee meeting with another committee. I would agree with Member Jordan, that seems to add bureaucracy. However, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to go forward. And then, when we get to the big hearings, because that's where we seem to get the most input from the environmentalists, is at the hearings. And then, is it too late?
It's too late.
So, I, you know, that's, I'd like to eliminate the too late. But I don't want to jump in with adding a whole other committee.
If I might add, you already have the Titusville Environmental Commission. And it's not because we've had a lack of a quorum for meeting. It's because staff has cut us back. We used to meet twice a month, just like P and Z on the alternate weeks that they did. That got cut back to once a month. And now, you know, I don't know what's going to happen. We had two invited speakers at the last, that were supposed to come to the last meeting. But we have other agenda items to finish working on too.
Sir, I don't think this is the place.
My point is that staff wasn't on the council meeting.
Address it to council, sir.
It wasn't us. And we want to participate, and we want to help. And, and our code says we're supposed to. So, it's not adding a new committee. It's putting the information before the commission that our code says we're supposed to do. That's all.
Thank you, sir. You ladies on, was that from the last one? I got it. Okay. Member Nelson?
And I just want, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Diesel and Mr. Jordan. We don't want to hold the process up, but at the same time, you've got people on the Titusville Environmental Commission that are very well-educated. You've got an environmental engineer, you've got the former director of the Solar Energy Commission, you've got some really smart people on there with an expertise that staff may or may not have. And it would be great to have their input before we get too far into the process, for them to say, hey, you know, maybe you ought to think about this or that, uh, as you're developing this. So I don't, and I, I agree, I don't want to see us getting into the process and all of a sudden, you know, we have a, a, a meeting, and you've got everybody out there upset about whatever's happened. I'd rather see it, see us iron out the kinks at the beginning. So that was my thought.
And, and it's a good thought. I, I happen to agree with Member Jordan, though. Let's be careful what we ask for, because we may wind up with a worse situation. So, I don't know how you can resolve all this, Mr. Busaka, but you've done magic before, so let's see what you come up with. Thank you. Anyone else for petitions and requests? I think that's what we're still on.
Good evening.
Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Mary Sparr, 825 Clifton's Cove Court in Cocoa. And I've, I just have something which would be very, very easy for staff to do, and it would be very fast. As a matter of fact, I've known it's been done in about five minutes by county staff. And there's, uh, there, you can put some maps in your packages for the, you know, sketch, um, the sketch plat, or sketch plat, and then also the application for comprehensive plan amendments and zoning, rezonings. Um, the county supplies a series of maps with, with all their packages. And, and it, it really is easy, because you now have that G I S capability, which is what they use. So they just, I mean, they just get on their computer and the map shoot out, like the FEMA floodplain map, you know, that's one of them. They have two wetlands map with each, um, you know, uh, proposal for some sort of development. I mean, you're not showing necessarily the layouts of the homes, but you can see if there's wetlands constraints. They have the National Wetlands Inventory, which is, I, I mean, it, it may not be totally accurate, which we know it had to be, um, you know, field-checked. And they also have the St. John's River Water Management District, the wetlands maps, included in every package. They have a soil map, so that, in particular, they're interested in identifying the aquifer recharged soils. And, and of course, it would show some of the soils that are, are, you know, not porous or well-drained as well. And then they have an aerial, so you can see if the property is covered with trees, for example. And then the coastal high hazard map, which is very helpful if you have somebody that wants to develop on the Indian River Lagoon. So, um, like I say, it would be very easy for your planning staff to do, or your G I S staff, just put in the property and just shoot out these maps, and like I say, it should take five minutes or less. I, I happen to know, because I was on the phone while they did them, and were shooting them out. So, um, please consider that with, with all your applications.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, will you take a look at that situation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Petitions and requests?
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. First, special thanks to Mike Majak and his persistence, his perseverance, his dedication to the environment, and he's been working on this for, for years now, and, and then there's an appearance that, there's a times that the, the Titusville Environmental Commission is, is, uh, is not given the full credit that it needs to be given. And thank you especially for Robert Jordan, for his comments. I, I certainly agree with what his comments were on that, on that particular issue brought up by Mr. Majak. Tonight, I'm here also because, thank you to the mayor and city manager, that I, today I opened an email with a report that is, is, has to do with my correspondence, 2012 to 2019, that was reviewed by an independent or engineering organization. So I'm looking at that report, the title of it has to do with a letter of map revision, and so far, what I've looked into is that letter of map revision was, uh, it, it, from what I can tell, is it was initiated by a letter, began in March of 2014. It developed then to a letter from FEMA, was, that was later, it may have been, and then, and the contract was given in 2015 to a GeoSynTech. The, uh, the allegations on February the 12th has to do with review of my correspondence from 2012 to 2019. So I certainly am questioning that, that this can possibly happen, considering that this, I'm begin, I'm telling you about 2014, 2015. So how can we have something, someone reviewing for the latter part of 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and part of 2019? So I have, as you've seen, as I've prepared this, uh, this, uh, this sign, and the sign says the contract, the contract regarding 2012 through 2019. So, uh, at this time, I haven't been able to find something that, and I'm, I'm looking further on this, in this particular issue, so I'm just letting you know, is that I'm looking further into it. And this particular LoMar was, included Baker Subdivision, and it, it, it lowered the, the flood zone map, the 100-year flood zone over a foot, took 80% of the homes out of Baker Subdivision, and it's, it brought it back to an elevation that was, that was computed in 1984 by a city's consultant, same elevation back in 1984. So that's...
Your time's up, sir.
Okay. I guess ask for more time? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on, on the petitions and requests? I see none. Next item, please, sir.
Yes, sir. We're to the item eight, which is consent agenda. Mayor, council, do you wish to pull any of these items?
I see no lights.
We have one card, it's for item eight D, and with your permission, I'll read the consent agenda items for the record.
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda item eight A, accept the grant award in the amount of $54,048 to fund the FY 2020 victim family advocate position and approve the budget amendment upon receipt of funds. Consent agenda item eight B, accept the 2020 grant, correction, JAG grant, in the amount of $25,219. Consent agenda item eight C, appropriate and approve the use of $10,000 in forfeiture fines to repair and maintain forfeiture vehicles, and approve the use of $3,000 in forfeiture funds to purchase crime prevention materials and promote various services the police department supports, and approve the attached budget amendment. Consent agenda item eight D, approve the work order number A E C O M W R 006 to A E Com Technical Services Incorporated in the amount of $40,026.52 to provide engineering consulting services, including but not limited to field investigation, technical memorandum, inviting documents, permitting, and project management services for the demolition of the South Street and Barna Avenue elevated storage tanks, and authorize the city manager to execute the work order. Consent agenda item eight E, approve the work order of contract bid 19B 057 to Affordable Development Incorporated of Titusville, Florida, for SR, State Route 405 utility relocations in the amount of $171,710.71, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item eight F, adopt resolution 50 2019 declaring that the city on 20, the six, on the 26th day of November 2019 at 6:30 PM, in the council chambers located at City Hall 555 South Washington Avenue, will hold a public hearing to consider vacating and abandoning and discontinuing certain public streets. Consent agenda item eight G, approve the award of contract bid 19B 058 to Affordable Development, a division of Driveways Incorporated of Titusville, Florida, for Eloise Avenue Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $116,891.81, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. And mayor, you do have one resolution here after your card deliberation is complete.
Okay. Did you ask about cards?
You have one card, it's for item eight D.
Okay. Clerk, please call a card.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. Just for procedural-wise, are we supposed to have somebody speak for it first, and then speak against? I'm speaking against.
Here's the only card.
Okay. Here we go. Eight D has to do with, I, I sent a letter, copy to you guys, sent it to Mr. Stauffer, and it's, it says, "Please provide a written statement, the city will be able to maintain peak demand and fire demand for our potable and firewater without elevated storage tank and without relying on cocoa water to meet this critical demand." I don't think I've received an email yet about it. Have you calculated the lack of source, of water source from the elevated water tower? I question, and I have, I question and ask if you've calculated this loss of source at this location, how is possible to meet the critical fire demand in the firehouse by removing this source of water and water pressure? And I put it in bold and underline it, during peak demand periods, can you provide these measured water flows when the effect of fire hydrants spring peak demands and demonstrate that this loss of source is acceptable to the fire department? I, I've seen a number of errors Water Resources has done over the years, costing millions of dollars, and I don't know whether this is one, another one of those errors. So I'm asking for, for that information. And I, I, I question whether, is there a possibility, if you're going to get rid of them, maybe you can sell them instead of, instead of just demolishing them? And there's mention about lead point on the out, lead paint on the outside of the, the tank on South Street. I don't know that that's, I don't see that that's a, a threat to our potable water. And so I also ask, please explain why, how city built the water tower off of Barna and then didn't use it much? It's a lot of money to put, was this a mistake years ago by Water Resources before, before Mr. Stauffer's time? I was going to say this before Mr. Stauffer's time. So those are some questions I have. I think they're significant, especially about the water pressure. Thank you.
Any other cards, clerk? Okay. Any other questions from council? See none? Oh, wait a minute, I do see one. Member Jordan? Uh, okay. Where's that?
Mr. Mayor? I move that we approve consent agenda items A through G.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There are none. Roll call, vote, please, clerk.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item?
Next item is item nine A, under ordinance, the second reading, public hearing, and related action. Ordinance number 33A 2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, correcting ordinance number 33 2019, amending section 16 116 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste and recycling fees, and by amending 16 dash 117 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees, and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees, and providing for an effective date.
On September 18th, 2019, ordinance 33 2019 was adopted, which inadvertently included incorrect rates. Please note that the correct rates were presented to council during the first reading on September 11th, 2019. The requested action is to conduct a second reading and public hearing to correct ordinance 33A 2019.
Okay. Staff, any comments on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or staff? Open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards on this?
Yes, sir.
Call, I'll close the public hearing. There's no applicant here. Counsel, discussion? Any further discussion? Ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Move that we approve ordinance number 33A dash 2019.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk, any further discussion? Clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is item nine B, ordinance number 27 2019 relating to retention in the area of critical concern. Ordinance 27 2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances related to retention in the area of critical concern, by amending chapter 30 Development Standards, section 30 dash 207, area of critical concern performance, to clarify retention requirements, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered the ordinance on October 2nd, 2019, and recommended denial of the ordinance as written. In a second motion, P N Z recommended significant changes to the proposed ordinance. A copy of both motions are attached. During their meeting on October 8th, 2019, councils tabled the ordinance until the October 22nd, 2019 meeting, to permit staff time to review the P N Z's recommendations. After consultation with Patrick Barnes of F, correction, B F A, staff has modified the P N Z's language and recommends council consider this language for adoption. This ordinance is referenced as staff-recommended ordinance. A matrix, a matrix is attached describing the comments of the P N Z ordinance and language. We have both Peggy Busaka and Sean Stauffer, Water Resources Director, here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this ordinance.
Member Jordan?
Yeah, I just have a, a couple of questions. First of all, there's two motions on, in the packet. Is either one of them the staff's motion?
No, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. And it looks like you all went through, I, I appreciate the, oh, what do you call it? The matrix, thank you. Who answered me? The matrix that you all put together, made it real clear on, you know? And, and I thought you did a good job for sure, and it was good. I wouldn't call it a compromise, it certainly made sure we got the things in that we need to have in, so very much appreciated. Thank you, ma'am.
Member Nelson?
So... Thank you. So I went through this afternoon and listened to Mr. Barnes again, specifically where Mr. Severs was asking him questions about his proposed ordinance. And my recollection, or what I heard, was that Mr. Barnes said, um, agreed with Mr. Severs on one, two, three, four, he said, everything should be, his suggestion was that all retention ponds be above 25 feet, above sea level, um, post-development. Five, he agreed with, no, five, he did not agree with. He didn't, he didn't address that. But six, he, he agreed with the first part, and seven, he agreed with. Is there an issue in, does staff have an issue with that? It, I, it was easier for me than the matrix, sorry. I, the matrix just couldn't do that. I know.
I'm going to do this while Sean, who's the real brains of this operation...
Okay.
...is going to answer the hard questions. I'll leave, answer the easy ones. The first part of the number one, the retention area is backfilled above 25 feet M S L. Staff is recommending that with no change.
Right.
The second one, the soils are backfilled, is permeable, the soils that are backfilled is permeable soils of similar texture and hydraulic characteristics, tested and approved by a geotechnical engineer. We are recommending that the language be well-drained permeable soils, and that we'd say certification by a professional engineer or professional geo- geologist, because that is currently what is required in the code.
Okay. Can I stop and ask a couple of questions here? Sorry, Sean.
Sure.
So what is, what is the difference between a geotechnical engineer and what you guys are describing in the code? Terms of training and expertise?
I, I would think that they are similar, but I think that, at least from staff's perspective, is that we wanted to reference back specific job titles or professional designations that are present in other parts of the code, so that this specific requirement can be incorporated in other requirements that we currently have.
Okay.
And if I could add just one thing, when we talked with Mr. Barnes about this, he agreed with the language of professional engineer, professional geologist.
Okay. So the geotechnical engineer, would he have more, I mean, we're, I'm sorry, and I, and I know I'm being picky, but I look at this and I go, I mean, I listened to Mr. Barnes twice, because I was like, what they're saying is this wellfield is only recharged by rain, and so if we screw it up, we really screw it up. So I was like, to me, that was, that was important. I mean, you know, we're talking about our drinking water. So I wanted to make sure I understood it totally. So I guess my question as a geotechnical engineer, would they have more training and experience dealing with your, your water coming into our, our water system? Are you with me? Did you ever say that?
I think, and, and I'm not a geotechnical engineer...
Right.
But in my opinion, the, these two descriptions or designation are commensurate with each other, that they would be the same, that both a professional engineer or a professional geologist has the qualifications and training to make that sort of certification.
See, and I'm, I don't want to argue with you, Sean, but I'm sort of like, to me, an engineer would not have that kind of training, I don't think. And I won't say that I'm right and you're wrong, but that's just sort of my thought process, is that they would have more experience in term, determine, determining how our aquifer is going to be impacted.
Right. And I would just like to add that the, the term professional engineer is an umbrella term, and under that, there are many specialties that, that you can be tested under, there are probably 20 different specialties. And in particular, you know, when we hire, um, geotechnical engineers... And in particular, you know, when we hire geotechnical engineers or professional engineers, you know, that part of that, when they sign it, they are saying that yes, they are trained in that, and that is part of their certification, that either by work or experience, that umbrella covers them and says that they are able to certify things associated with public health.
Okay, so if we were to put down something, and, and I sort of look at this as, you know, developers are gonna be looking at it, and we want to be very clear about what we're willing to accept and what we're not willing to accept. And so I have a son-in-law that's an engineer, and he does commercial buildings. I don't want him missing, necessarily making decisions on our water supply, so what word can I use or could we use that would designate this is the kind of person we want?
So typically, and, and you know, part of when we write these things, you know, we always think about, what do we expect to see arrive in the next package, right?
Right.
You know, what are we, what are we gonna see? How is this gonna be presented to us? How do we imagine that they would show compliance with this requirement?
Correct.
And so, and certainly in my mind, and if Peggy has a disagreement, I'd ask her to certainly chime in, but we get soils reports for the sites, and part of that report is certified, it's usually through a geotechnical company. There's a handful in this area that we use, I can't remember any of the names now, Artiman and Associates, there's three or four, we see the reports all the time, we use them all the time. Many times, they could be professional engineers that could work there, and that was kind of my expectation, is that part of the soils report would then certify these additional requirements. And so, you know, we would know through the company, we would know through their registration that they are experts and can make this determination, in our opinion.
So I'm gonna play devil's advocate, worse, I'm gonna play attorney. That's really bad. So it says professional engineer, and I walk in and say, I hired a professional engineer, I hired Walt, he says he's a professional engineer, what do you? I know you didn't, but, you know, I've complied, I've got a professional engineer, so you have to accept as a report.
No, we don't. In, in the world that we work in, the, if traffic engineer has to provide a traffic study, we will not accept a structural engineer's traffic study. So just as we would not accept a structural engineer's study about the geology of an area, we understand that, that engineering, and this is a layman's explanation, that a engineering, there's a certain expertise. It's a lot like when you go to a doctor and you want to know, he's a heart surgeon or a plastic surgeon. They both say doctor, but you wouldn't accidentally go to one when you needed the other. We do the same with the, with the engineer. Now, if you want to say professional engineer, or professional geologist, or geotechnical engineer, we can certainly do that, but we were told by our hydrologist, who is not a geotechnical engineer, that this was good language.
So you're, you're saying use professional engineer?
Or professional geologist, or geotechnical engineer, to allow any of those three, we could certainly do that.
Okay. I guess I'm used to looking at criminal laws, and you have to be very strict, the interpretation's very strict, so I'm assuming, Mr. Brim, we're okay.
Well, it says it needs to be certified by a professional engineer or a geologist, so one of the questions I'd wonder is, I assume they'd have to have certain criteria qualifications to certify such a report regarding permeable soils, right?
Yeah, part of that would, it would be the professional licensure that they hold.
Except or, by having engineer or geologist or, then of course, it could be any one of those three, so doing, doing the or, they could accept a study from any one of those three, if that's how it's worded.
Would it protect us from problems? I mean.
I can't answer that question.
Best guess?
And will you guarantee it?
Will you guarantee it?
As long as they're qualified to render an opinion regarding well-drained or permeable soils, but I, I'm not an engineer, I couldn't tell you whether or not these particular types of engineers would be qualified to do that, I.
So wait a minute, you just said something. You said who would be qualified, who is qualified to render this type of opinion? So by putting that kind of language in, then staff could turn, staff truly has the ability to turn around and say, this person is not qualified.
I, I would pose that to Mr. Stoffer as an engineer of, you know, what we would look at in that regard when we determine, are they qualified? In other words, if you get a certification from a PE regarding the permeable soils, is there a way to determine whether that person is qualified to render such an opinion?
Correct. So if you said a qualified licensed professional engineer, geologist, or a geotechnical engineer, that would cover it?
That would put another criteria on the individual and whether or not they could render such an opinion. I, I don't know what qualifications a PE would have to do that, that's why I defer to staff, but that is one more criteria or layer you've put on that ability to provide a decision.
Okay.
By using, by adding the word qualified, that could certainly give staff the ability to disregard something certified by, as Peggy alluded to, like a traffic engineer. If a traffic engineer was signing and sealing a geotechnical report, you know, we could determine them to be unqualified, and then we could disallow it.
Okay. I will tell you, Mr. Severs wanted.
Clarification of something.
Yeah.
Well, wait, wait. Do you have any other remarks you want to make, and then we can turn it over to Mr. Jordan?
Can I turn it over to Mr. Jordan for two seconds?
You can, I can.
Can you turn it over to Mr.?
I hate to discuss discussions, but, Mr. Jordan, why don't you go ahead, and then we'll come back to you.
Yeah, it's, it's just a question, I, I'm looking at your matrix, and the P and Z came up with the geotechnical engineer, is that correct? And, and what I heard Mr. Stoffer said was that they, you put it in the category that best fit what is required. So the P and Z came up with geotechnical engineer, correct? Yes?
Yes, that was their suggestion.
Right, but then staff looked at it and said, the qualified people to do this is these categories, correct?
Yes.
Yeah?
And I believe that was confirmed by our consultant as well.
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay, so I, I don't think there's an argument, because, you know, you're not gonna bring somebody in who is not gonna be qualified to do the work that needs to be required. I mean, we do that all the time in all the operations that you do here.
Yes, sir.
There's gonna be a qualified, certified person who's gonna have documentation that says he is, you know, qualified to do that, and there's a liability problem, if they're not qualified, and they give you something, and it causes harm, then you can go after that person who is not qualified to do it, so staff is gonna make sure that that person is qualified to do the job that they're required to do.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Member Nelson?
And I guess, Mr. Jordan, my point is, understand that we could go after somebody who isn't qualified, but on the other hand, we need to protect ourselves, because this is our drinking water. So, you know, the fact that we get a million, ten million dollar judgment two years from now doesn't really help us.
You're talking to the whole council, right, so we can.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
According to our rules, we're not supposed to have discussions.
Okay.
Because they sometimes turn into arguments, so everybody gets a certain amount of time, you can answer each other within the minutes that you are given.
I just, I.
I get it, but I still have to, it's my job to maintain order.
Thank you.
So you still have the force.
I know, Mr. Barnes said that type A soils were good because of their permeability, and that they would, and I forgot, what the, what the measurements were, but it was like they would.
Percolate?
Percolate, thank you, thank you, Peggy. Like fifty inches of water.
I think it's twenty inches an hour.
Twenty inches, no, one was fifty.
Oh, okay.
And the other one was like, one, I mean, it was like, really crazy. So I think when they were talking to him, what he finally said is, it needs to be type A soils are similar for maximum permeability.
And what we did was, we sent this language to him. This is the only language that he actually added words. So the words that you see before you were added, some of those were added by Mr. Barnes.
Okay.
And those words, the, the well-drained permeable was more descriptive than just suitable.
Right.
So that was added by staff. The next one is to allow recharge to the superficial aquifer, that was added by Mr. Barnes, he took the words function and out, and then the other, it says similar to that of a type A soil. And the reason for that is because he told us that type A soils include things like slopes, and it's not just permeability, so he wanted to ensure that the permeability was the, kind of the highlighted issue, and then the same question about professional engineer or professional geologist, just to be consistent.
Okay, and then he was talking, well, in his presentation or his question answer, with P and Z, he was talking about the soil beneath the backfilled soil is type A soil or has been modified so as to be of a texture and hydraulic characteristics, so as to function and recharge the superficial aquifer similar to that of a type A soil.
Correct, and what he suggested is that we remove the word function and, and it says, what you see here on page two of four on the matrix, under staff recommendation, it's also the language that's, that's within the staff recommended ordinance, says, the soil beneath the backfilled soil is a well-drained permeable soil, or has been modified, so as to be of a texture and hydraulic characteristics, to allow recharge the superficial aquifer, similar to that of a type A soil.
Okay, maybe I need, maybe I need to work on the matrix.
Anything else?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
What you see in that matrix, under staff recommendation, the black ink is that which was recommended by P and Z, and the red ink is the changes that were made either by staff or the hydrologist.
Oh, I know what I was thinking, that under number two, it would be nice to have the soils there backfilled as permeable soils or similar texture and hydraulic characteristics, such soil must provide maximum permeability. And I don't know how the staff feels about that.
I can only tell you that this was the language recommended by the hydrologist.
Okay. Okay, I think I'll.
Pass.
I'll pass for a little bit, yeah.
I mean, Vice Mayor Diesel. That was gonna be a whole lot more simple about thirty minutes ago, and I'm gonna remain that way, because I, you know, I just, and again, clearly, my, you know, my hat's off to you, Member Nelson, because you have dived in with two feet and nose and, and everything else, and, and I, I think that's awesome. I tend to agree with what I think I heard from Member Jordan. You know, I have complete confidence in where you're going with this, and this is nothing that I've ever seen you all, when we speak of water, Mr. Stoffer, specifically you, and when we come up with ordinances, I, I know that Peggy's not going to take a step forward without knowing exactly where she's been and where she's going. So I have complete confidence where you're at. I have been able to hear from P and Z a little bit, and, and they seem to be very pleased with the efforts that you have put in too, and that's, that's nice to hear. The fact that you've talked to Mr. Barnes and consulted with him, and the number of changes in the matrix, some straight from him, you know, using the word qualified, you know, that's, you know, whenever we write a, I can't help it, I have to go to this, but whenever I write any kind of a discipline contract for whether it be a student, or a player, or an athlete, I always use the word coaches discretion, because there's just too much out there. You can't, you can't, you can't possibly hit every single thing, so when you use the word qualified, you don't get the right guy, or the right, you know, words, you can scratch it, that's not it, we're going somewhere else, we're gonna go to the hydrologist this time, or whatever is necessary. The matrix changes are many, clear, and meticulous, and I overall wanna, wanna thank you, and, and, you know, even P and Z, for the effort that has gone into this, and then, you know, Mr. Barnes' effort of being here and then coming back and answering every single question that could possibly come up, I think this has been vetted as much as anything I've ever seen vetted on this council. That doesn't mean that there aren't things, and I'm not, certainly not the expert, so I'm not looking to be the expert. So with that said, I'm certain that, you know, Member Nelson has many more points that, that, you know, are beyond me, I don't try to, to be there, because I, I don't, but I do know that I have confidence there, I have confidence that we brought Mr. Barnes back, and if you want to call the checks and balance, you've got the P and Z on the other side as well. I feel very comfortable with what's going on here, and could move forward with that.
I see no other lights, I would just like to say, I almost word for word, I would repeat what you said, I think staff has done a great job on this, it's been a difficult situation, and we appreciate, I appreciate, I'm sure all the council does too, the work you've put into this, so, thank you. I see, whoop, we do have a light, okay?
And I just want to say, only because it's, it is an important issue, I'm sort of like picking through it, and I'm putting my attorney hat on, how to make sure that nobody tries to skirt around us. So it's not that I don't appreciate what you guys have done, but I just want to make sure that we don't have problems with it at some point. I'm foreseeing, suppose that somebody used to say, you know, write that so that, you know, ten years from now, somebody can't come in and get one over on you. So that's more what I'm thinking is, we need to make sure that ten years from now, well, I won't be here, but Richard might, so that Richard isn't, isn't trying to defend it, or you're not trying to defend it, so that it's just so clear that there's no argument with it, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. I see no further lights, open the public hearing, clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir, we have about six.
Okay, call the first card, please.
Kay Saint Ange.
Thank you, yes, my name is Kay Saint Ange, and I live at twenty-three sixty Maryland in Titusville. The proposed ordinance allows developers to backfill retention areas to attain twenty-five foot mean sea level. This could result in an incredible amount of filling and grading. What if a developer plans a retention pond at a location that is ten feet mean sea level? Will he be allowed to backfill this area to fifteen feet? How much grading would this require? How many dump trucks full of dirt would be brought to sites across city roads? Titusville Technical Manual states, development including grading and contouring shall take place in a manner that protects the roots and stability of trees. All this grading and backfilling to put retention ponds at a certain level and far from the stormwater source makes it quite difficult to protect trees. Saint John's River Water John's River Water District recommends low-impact development strategies that move away from a centralized method of collection, conveying and discharging of stormwater. Instead, they encourage LID strategies which emphasize treatment of runoff at or near the source of stormwater runoff. These practices often decrease the size of traditional retention basins and can be a lot less costly. In other words, rather than amending ordinances for more backfilling for retention, other methods than large retention ponds could be considered and used. LID designs maintain the pre-development hydrologic function of the area, just the opposite of what is proposed with this ordinance. The Florida EPA and East Central Florida Regional Planning Council are recommending these LID practices. The city of Cocoa Beach is revising their stormwater master plan to promote LID. It is time for Titusville to reconsider the overuse of centralized stormwater retention ponds with its excessive grading resulting in widespread destruction of trees, including untouchable trees like the forty-inch diameter tree slated for demise at Brookshire. The Technical Manual states the developer agrees to work with staff and adjusts the proposed layout to preserve more trees of twenty inches or greater. I urge staff to do just that. Require the developer to adjust the placement of retention ponds to preserve this untouchable tree and as many trees as possible. Retain the original ordinance and make every effort to maintain the pre-development hydrological function of the area by managing stormwater at the source elevation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card, please.
Arlene Baker.
Good evening, Ms. Baker.
Good evening.
Name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Arlene Baker, five-one-five North Carpenter Road, Titusville. Um, I disagree with the city of Titusville allowing any developer any leniency in development within the area of critical concern. Any development in the area of critical concern should be held to the highest conservation standards. Titusville is not on the Floridian aquifer system. We only have superficial water available. The recharge for the well field that produces the most water is the property that is being developed into Brookshire subdivision. Allowing this development to destroy the natural flora and fauna that qualified this property as a Florida Forever approved property and allowing the permanent decline in aquifer recharge is not what city representatives should be doing. I have letters from bipartisan group who were in office while we were trying to get this property preserved for future generations. They are County Commissioner Truman Scarborough, Representative Bob Allen, Representative Tony Sasso, Senator Bill Posey, Congressman Tom Feeney. All of these men understood the importance of preserving this property. The city of Titusville allowed DOT to put a drainage pond on the northeast portion that did two things for DOT. It gave them the fill for widening project of I-95 and it allowed them to check the box on the number of ponds per so many miles. It did not, however, fulfill the reason for having the pond, which was to drain the excess water from I-95 in heavy rains. It doesn't work because water doesn't run uphill. This property has topography and instead of using it as a positive, this developer wants to make this property as flat as possible. I moved here from east Tennessee where nothing is flat. Development in east Tennessee has not been hindered by the topography. Engineers figure out how to make things work. Anyone who gets water from the city of Titusville, commercial or private, should be concerned with their property values dropping if we don't have enough water to meet demand. The city of Titusville will not disclose the specific locations of their well fields for homeland security reasons, yet the city itself is jeopardizing our largest well field by not protecting the recharge for that well field. Please disallow any further destruction to the recharge for our well field. We can't fix the damage that has occurred, but making it worse hurts all of us. I'm sorry, I rushed. I didn't wanna run out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card, please, clerk.
Mary Sparr.
Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Mary Sparr, age twenty-five, Clifton's Cove Court, Cocoa. And I'm speaking for Sierra Club. Sierra Club realizes the significance and serious nature of the ordinance changes you are considering tonight. Whether or not any ordinance changes are made tonight, the Brookshire plans will need to be changed since their planned detention ponds are not filled to twenty-five feet elevation. Um, Sierra Club believes the ordinance is currently written is clear and asks you to keep it as currently written. In other words, deny the ordinance changes. This was P and Z's preferred action, their first motion. Staff just needs to confirm with the applicants that they understand the requirements and intend to abide by them. Titusville is not in the business of turning a blind eye to the rules just to make development as profitable as possible. At the P and Z meeting, Mr. Barnes indicated that it is possible, possible, to construct a backfilled pond that would provide recharge capabilities similar to a pond constructed above twenty-five foot pre-development. But then, he went on to describe the soil borings, soil testings, and location and suitability analysis that would be required. He mentioned the need for city staff to check the applicant's test results and quote, "hold their feet to the fire" as to whether it's a good pond location. Let's be realistic. Achieving pre-development recharge may not be mission impossible, but it is mission improbable, mission improbable. We suggest that you do not dangle this tempting option in front of applicants, especially if citing ponds in wetlands is an option. Instead, deny the ordinance changes. Now, you've been talking about the alternate recommendations of P and Z and staff. And though we prefer the P and Z's recommendations, it looks like you're, this, what you're discussing is possibly some modifications to staffs. So, I would like to suggest three modifications if you choose, not my first choice, which is deny. But if you, the things I'd like to see added are before the word certified, add tested and certified. Um, that was in the P and Z recommendations. In addition, may I have one more minute, please?
Yes, ma'am. But we, uh, we have a motion?
Yeah, a motion.
Second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
You have the time.
Okay, I would, I would, second thing, I would like to see, um, the requirement for backup data being supplied to the city. That was a P and Z, um, recommendation, um, which is not in there. I think it's very important. And third, um, applicants shall not utilize this section to directly impact wetlands. That is common sense. In conclusion, please recognize the immense value of your area of critical concern and protect your water supply by denying the proposed changes to the ordinance. If, however, you are not inclined to do that, please consider the three recommendations that we have.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, wait, uh, ma'am, you have a question?
You were talking, she was talking about, uh, tested and certified, but you didn't say under what section you would add those words.
Yeah, I got this packet here. Um, okay, now, um, under number two, um, P and Z recommendations about the soils that are backfilled, um, it says and tested slash approved by a geotechnical engineer. I realize you're, um, you know, going through a decision on those words, but you just have certified. So, I would suggest you add the word tested and certified. I mean, Mr. Barnes was very adamant in, um, his advocacy for testing. He was very serious. So, that's, that would be in that section number two. And then, um, you know, you can see that number five, uh, in the P and Z recommendation for the, um, supplying the data and analysis demonstrating that the post-development recharge will not be, will be equal to or greater than the pre-development recharge capacity by a qualified expert. I think that needs to be added. I mean, it's just, it just nee- it just needs to be done. And I know your, um, engineers is, do verify information when it's applied to them because actually I've had an email conversation with your engineer. And it's a great thing that they do that. But let's just make sure that the data is supplied. Um, and the last thing, you know, P and Z wanted applicants shall not utilize this section to directly affect wetlands. And they go on. But, um, I'm not, I don't know how you all feel about that. But let me just say that the first part of that sentence definitely needs to be put in the language. Applicants shall not utilize this section to directly impact wetlands. Although I think the rest of it's good, but let's, um-
Do you have a question?
I, I don't have a question. I do have a comment. When I was listening to Mr. Barnes, I really did not pick up on his, that he was emphasizing number five.
Um, okay. Number five was about the testing? Yeah.
The, uh, post-development testing.
Yes. Okay.
And I did not-
I did go through the tape. As a matter of fact, um, I went through the entire tape and then today I, I went through, um, the first part of the tape to make sure what kind of things he was talking about. By testing, I mean these soil borings. I mean, he kept talking about the borings.
But the post-development, to prove that there was, um, as much recharge, um, after the development versus before the development.
Yeah, I mean-
I didn't notice them really focusing on that.
I guess, you know, you raise a good point. It just, I was just thinking to myself, you know, he would need a test afterwards. He would need to do some sort of laboratory test with these soils to see if, um, you know, the rate of percolation, um, you know, matched what would the pre-development. Because, I mean, like you pointed out, you know, he's talking about, you know, fifty inches per hour rain, um, that could come down in, in the, um, soils that are above, um, twenty-five foot compared to like maybe one inch per hour in a wetland.
Yeah, at any rate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Clerk, call the next card, please.
Uh, the next card is, I believe it's Nyra, and then the last name is A-T-I-Y-A.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Nyra Atia. I live at twenty-two eighty-five Beechwood Court in Titusville. Uh, I came to Titusville for the birding festival, fell in love with the beauty of the, natural beauty of the area and loved the city and bought property here and moved here. And I would like to deny the ordinance, please, and, uh, to say that I was just in Gainesville and very impressed with the low-impact development that takes place in that beautiful city, as well as the lush canopy that I saw throughout the city. And I hope that we in Titusville can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card, clerk, please.
Michael Majak.
Name and address for the record, sir.
Michael Majak, forty-four twenty Alpine Lane. Hasn't changed since earlier today.
Yeah, but they don't know when they look at and they hear it from talking.
That's true. This ordinance, I believe, is being, um, pushed by the city to compensate for some, I believe, errant decision-making in the previous development. Um, otherwise, my ears must be hurting me. This is a, a picture that you've never seen because it was part of the original plan of where the wetlands are. And the red lines around here delineate the twenty-five foot elevation level, including this corner down here, which is the subject corner of the property that we're talking about. Now, I am an engineer. I'm a professional modeling and simulation person. I deal with a lot of subject matter experts and I've done a lot of models of terrain and water and hydrology. Doesn't make me the expert, but I have more than the average layperson understanding. And one of the things that I picked up from the expert was that this has to be an engineered structure. This is not just a pile of sand that you put at ten feet above sea level and raise it up to twenty-five because when you pour water on it, it's just gonna squirt out the bottom if all of the sand, as it's identified in the current ordinance, is class A, which is high permeability sand. You ought to understand that the water's gotta go somewhere. And if you're building on a wetland, you're building it on an area that has less than a half to one inch percolation per hour. So, where's the water gonna go? It's gonna either go into the structure and sit there and become wet, or it's gonna fail like a dam or a dike and squirt out the sides. And whatever's on top of it, it's gonna fall. And that water, that stormwater's still gonna go somewhere. Where's that gonna be managed? So, I completely agree with the testing and the evaluation afterwards. I completely agree with the geological engineer being involved in this process. But more to the point, which I've got forty-nine seconds of, I wanted to point out in our comprehensive plan that one of the very first objectives we have is for salt and surface water, both fresh and salt, to be protected, to protect streams, lakes, rivers, estuaries, wetlands, and the coastal coastline from environmentally destructive alterations. Which wouldn't like an opinion by the T E C on something like this before it came before council. I'd also like to point out, under potable water, we are to ensure the protection of the city's potable water source and the safeguard public health through the enforcement of adopted aquifer protection measures. How are we doing that if we're destroying wetlands? More to the point, the sand above thirty-five feet, may I have two more minutes, please?
I have a motion to the second. All those in favor, say yes, sir.
Okay. So, the point is that this is the area of critical concern. It's, it's a highly sensitive area. Fifteen years ago, that well field wasn't being rested enough and we were starting to pull up saltwater from the bottom. And if the wells, wells get soured with saltwater, they're not usable anymore after that. Not within our lifetime. It takes a while for the salt to get washed back down. It takes proper management. That management comes from these recharged soils above twenty-five feet. And in this particular property, the area of critical concern is right over well field two. It's, it's a very important and very strategic part of the plan. This kind of intensity of development should never have been allowed in the area of critical concern. It's our water, our future resource. We had to pull strings like crazy to be able to go up north to start pulling more water for the city because we were running out. I don't want to see this happen again. We need to protect our areas of critical concern, certainly with more than what we've done so far. Because filling a wetland and losing it to the Saint Johns is not what I think we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Lauralee Thompson.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Lauralee Thompson, thirty-five fifty Irwin Avenue in Memes. And I am so impressed with everything that I've heard tonight from Member Nelson, from Ms. Pisaka, and Mr. Stover and all of you guys. I, I have not done my homework the way you guys have. So, I'm not, I'm not well-versed in what we're doing. However, I do know that people, like she said, people are moving here because Titusville's special. We have, we're different than the rest of the county. We have unique topography here and that, and part of that is the critical- We have unique topography here, and that, and part of that is the critical, area of critical concern. We need to protect that. If you think about how different the neighborhoods along South Carpenter Road would be had they had that kind of intense development and they had been, had moved the sand and filled in the wetlands, think how different South Carpenter Road would look. And so that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the character of an area, aesthetics for the people that live here in addition to our drinking water supply. So there's new technology, low-impact development. There are other ways to manage stormwater other than building big ponds now. And there's ways to develop, using low-impact development. And I'd hope that as we're moving through this process, that we would start using and putting into code the low-impact development practices so that we can keep Titusville the special place that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Thanks for your input. Next card, please.
The last card is Dan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm also the engineer record of more than a dozen subdivisions in the city of Titusville. My concern is that there's error. There's a big error in this ordinance, and it has to do with water flows downhill. So that's just demonstrating water flows downhill. Maybe that sounds silly to you, but let's say that the rim of this pond is at elevation 25. Down here is a road elevation 20. Now, if there's not a road here, maybe this is going to work. But the thing is, is it says right here, it says, "All required retention ponds shall be located in areas above 25 feet." Means, so this is 25 feet. There are no ponds down here. However, especially one, engineers who listen to this, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Stoffer, Mr. Majak, is that there's no treatment from here to here. We're going to have to have a road connecting this, in this, let's say, in this situation. So two things are required. You're supposed to have quality and quantity in your, in your stormwater pond. Quality requires you to treat road surfaces. So you're required to have a stormwater pond down here. So I just read to you, "All required retention ponds shall be located in the area above 25 feet." You can't, when you have this restriction, you cannot treat these roads that are from here to here to connect to this existing road. So this is an error. It defies the fact that water flows downhill. Just demonstrate to you. For water over here, by golly, it flows down, and it, there's no pond here to collect it. It defies gravity. It defies the reality. So my evaluation of the wording of this ordinance is that it's nonsense and it's illogical, my evaluation as an engineer. That's just one point. I do want to agree with, especially with the lady who was first person, who talked about the destruction of trees. Of course, when you fill, when you fill all down here, you're destroying the trees from here to here. So Mr. Stoffer, professional engineer, has given his public opinion on this matter, and he opposes what I presented. I presented an email to him, and he opposed my council meeting, P and Z meeting, and he opposes the fact that water flows downhill. He's a professional engineer. And I found that to be a problem. So I'll read it to you again. It says, "All required retention ponds shall be located in areas above 25 feet beneath sea level." But it's not going to work. Maybe it's going to work in Brookshire, but there's going to be cases, it just won't work. Why? Because water flows downhill. It's a fact. May I have another minute? Don't think so. Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion. Give me another minute? Excuse me, sir. We haven't had a vote yet. I have, I have a motion and a second. As part of the procedure. And now we go to the council. All those in favor, say yes. Any opposed, like sign. You have another minute, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Diesel.
Okay. I'm trying to be reasonable with you. And this is an error. It's an error that I pointed out repeatedly, even at the council meeting when it was, if you remember, I said it was nonsense and illogical. So this, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to save the environment, and everybody here doing the same thing. But in this particular case, this is nonsense because you cannot treat a road from here to here. You can't do it. And you can't, if there's houses down here, you can't treat the water down here because it says it's got to be located up here at 25 feet. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other cards, clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Council discussion. Anyone have any further discussion?
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'd just like to explain to everyone here what it is we're doing. We currently have an ordinance that requires that for property where some of it is above 25 feet and some is below 25 feet, that there is very specific standards for where retention can be located. And for the area, it says, "In the cases where property is both below and 20, and above 25 feet in elevation, retention areas within the area above 25 feet have to be 25 feet or greater." It didn't say whether that was post-development or pre-development. The staff looked in the past at the way it's been interpreted. In some cases, it was interpreted before, post-development at 25 feet, and in some cases, it's been pre-development at 25 feet. So we have not been consistent throughout the history of this wording. And in some cases, there's actually been variances that have been given to this section. So the staff did the best they could with interpreting this section. There was a development that came in that was only required to maintain a 25-year storm. They instead maintained on-site the stormwater from the, all water that fell on that site is maintained in that development. So the interpretation wasn't really that important to staff because no water was being let to go off of the site. Now, if it doesn't run off, then probably it perks down, except for some amount that's going to go up in evapotranspiration, but that, that's the way of nature, so you got to live with that cycle. The developer came in and said, "We think staff needs, we would like to see some guidance as to whether this is pre versus post-development." Because it has been interpreted by staff in the past both ways. That's all we're doing. So we put in the words, two words, "post-development." Then the question became, "Does that make sense from a hydrologist's perspective?" So the hydrologist was engaged, and they said, "Yes, it does." Then P and Z said, "Let's see if we can make this even better." So staff then reviewed that again with the hydrologist, who said, "Sure, we can make that better. But to tell you the honest truth, if this develops, if this doesn't go forward, this is not, in my opinion, and I'm not a hydrologist, but there are more standards in this ordinance than there is in the current ordinance." So for the people who've asked for denial, I don't think they understand. The second thing is that we can continue not to have good direction on this. And it will be interpreted, I promise you, in the future in various different ways. Because eventually, the ordinance, as it stands, will begin to be looked at with different eyes. We don't all, you know, live here and work here forever. So that's what we're doing. We're not talking about putting additional retention areas anywhere. We're not talking about flooding out wetlands. We're not talking about drying up wetlands. We're talking about whether or not, in an area where there's above 25 feet and below 25 feet, is it okay to fill the retention to above 25 feet? For those areas above 25 feet, because as Mr. Johnston says, drainage works because water flows downhill. So anything below 25 feet is going to have retention below 25 feet, and anything above will have it above. And the question is, is it post-development when you measure that? And for the person who made the comment that the retention ponds are not above 25 feet for the specific development that was referenced, that's incorrect. There are two geodetic, that's the wrong word, there are two datums by which elevations are determined. There's an old one and a new one. And the old one was originally shown, but if you use the new data, it is above 25 feet. And that was verified by our engineer. So really, we just need to understand what it is we're doing here. And we're clarifying whether we look at that redevelopment, that retention as pre or post-development when we look at the elevation. Mr. Stoffer will now correct anything I've said.
Member Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying to understand, I really appreciate your explanation. I think a question would be, if we are above 25 feet, we fill it above 25 feet, it's going to percolate down because of the fact that you have to have permeable soil, right? In order for it to percolate down. So we're not losing anything. There's no degradation of what we're trying to maintain as far as the water's concerned.
And there's one other issue. In order to even remove fill from an aqua, from the area of critical concern, staff has to approve that. In my time in this city, staff has not done that. And I, and I know that Mr. Stoffer and other staff members get a lot of pushback about that. And I can tell you that there's a development out there right now that is very unhappy. They wanted to take fill off of the area of critical concern. And Mr. Stoffer said, "No, move it around on the site because that's important." So it does allow some change in topography, but it does not allow you to remove the fill and put it in an area that's not going to protect the recharge. Did I say that wrong?
Oh, no, no. That was excellent. Thank you. And then, just to go back to your question, Member Jordan, by filling, you encourage recharge. You're actually able to store more water because you've now created a greater depth from the surface of the pond to the groundwater table. And the idea is it won't evaporate if you cover it up with a bunch of soil. So thereby, you have more recharge for the wellfields.
So is it safe to say that we're actually improving on what we're trying to do? As far as the environment is concerned, as far as the water retention, the water quality and all that, we're actually making things better in that area? Can we say that?
In my opinion, I see this as a net positive for aquifer storage.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Member Nelson.
And I, I understand, Peggy, that this is how it started out, but it's sort of like it's in front of us, and it's sort of like, what can we do to make sure that it's tight enough that somebody's not trying to slip past you? Which is always good. So, I mean, I, to me, there are things that I would want to add in here. I would want to add the license for licensed professional engineer, geologist. I would like to add in something about this needs to be either Type A soil or whatever is going to get our maximum permeability. I would like to, wait a minute. I know I had it. And I, obviously, we need to make sure that the soil under the backfield soil is permeable so that we know that we have maximum permeability under that. That somebody said, I think Mr. Barnes said, "Putting sand on top of hardpan isn't going to get you anywhere." So.
He did say that.
Yeah. And I agree with it. So to me, that was important. It was important to me that we not try to put retention ponds along the, that we spread them out over the property and we not put them on the edges of the property because Mr. Johnson's right. You know, if we have the retention pond on the corner of the property and the road is below that, then we're going to have a flooded road. I see as having a flooded road logically.
But it depends on the topography, though.
Right. But if you have.
Yeah. If you have that situation, it certainly would, but it's not always going to be that way.
Correct. Correct. So by not having, by having them spread out, to me, that makes more sense. I'm sure I put something else down. I do like wildlife protection because I think, no matter how many times we say it, it doesn't, doesn't hurt. You know, let's not impact the wetlands. Let's leave them there. Let's not try to get the dirt moved over there. And the runoff being directed toward the retention ponds.
If I could.
Sure.
The hydrologist has explained to us that some wetlands actually serve as recharge. So in some instances, it's important to have water being put into the wetlands for two reasons. One, it helps the wetland. And two, it's actually recharge. And that depends on whether, as we were, as Mr., what's his name again?
Barnes.
As Mr. Barnes said, it depends whether it's a perched wetland or not. A perched wetland probably means that there's some kind of hardpan underneath it, and the water is not going to perk down. Where another different kind of wetland may want that water and may actually recharge. Part of what wetlands do is hold water. And in order for water to soak in, sometimes you have to hold it for a while to the, so the soils can soak in. So when we talked about this with him, that's why he said, "The Water Management District does this. They do these analyses." And they said, "When they look at the type of wetland and the soils that are underneath the wetland, they know whether it needs to have water put into it, whether it will increase the recharge." So when we recommended that number five be deleted, and you will notice that the, the P and Z recommendation says, that the language here are the St. John's River Water Management Requirements and sections of the technical manual. The Water Management District has the modeling people, they have the professionals, and we depend on them to do the wetland impacts. Now, if council wants us to do that, then we can get ourselves some more staff members. And we can do that.
Peggy's smiling.
So that's, that's the trade-off you have, and that's why that language has been recommended for deletion. In addition to that, "The land's surface surrounding the retention pond shall be relatively flat. No adjacent steep slopes that allow seepage or outbreaks," was recommended by the P and Z, and the staff has recommended no change to that language.
Okay.
So.
So, let me.
And then the other thing that you mentioned is the additional qualified professional engineer or professional geologist or professional or geotechnical engineer.
Correct.
So that language we can add in there. Again, the language that says the soils are backfilled, are well-drained, permeable soils, number two, was specifically recommended by Mr. Barnes.
And the only thing I was thinking was maximum permeability because, you know, obviously, might be easier to use this soil as opposed to this soil. But on the other hand, we're looking for maximum permeability.
Now, we're out of my area of expertise. I can only tell you what the hydrologist said.
Sean? Can I put you on the spot?
The question about maximum, I mean, I, you know, I think that the, I know one of the parts you just mentioned was the soils that'll be backfilled that would be, would be below the pond itself.
Correct.
And, you know, we talk about well-drained and permeable, and, you know, these are all the same things that Pat Barnes with PFA has said. He said during the meeting, as well as on the phone calls. And so I think we've tried to capture that as best we could in the proposed ordinance, and I feel comfortable with the language that we have at this time.
Okay. Okay. So you think we'll end up with maximum permeability with this language?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I want to go back a little bit to something you said, Peggy, because I agree, and I think my previous statement says that I agree. First of all, I think this has been vetted. I don't think some of the people may understand just how much give and take, back and forth there's been with the P and Z and with Mr. Barnes and with the staff. This is not just something that was put together. I think that denial of this would be, you know, kind of going backwards a little bit, like you said. If we deny it, we go back to where we were. And, you know, denial, you know, stops the new standards that you're moving forward. And I also think you helped clear up, as I'm looking at the matrix with all the red and the line-outs and the changing of the language. I think it takes care of some of the, and maybe this is the wrong word, but, you know, some of the loose or misinterpreted or easily misinterpreted wording that allowed developers to do things or at least question things that didn't need to be questioned or misinterpreted. So, with the vetting that has taken place, the discussion, the debate, the analysis, and more analysis, and then even more analysis, is it perfect? I don't know. I don't guess it is. I don't guess anything we've ever come up with in our lives is going to be perfect. Can it, you know, be better as we go? But this is better than where we were. Unless I'm just flat-missing it with all of this matrix read out and changing, and, you know, some people out of some things. And I might add that one that stuck out in my mind. Somebody talked about maybe a little more testing. The only way you really know is to test. So, you know, that one kind of stood out to me. And maybe we can do that as we go. But I do think that we are moving in an improved state. I mean, it's where it was, nobody wanted. So where we're going and where we're at right now is better than where we were. And certainly, the work has been done and the analysis and, you know, again, the experts have come in and some people who just simply wanted to test, speaking of testing, test you guys to see if you knew where you're going. So, I'm happy about where we're going. I'm happy with the improvements. I'm happy that we did this and that you did this. I didn't do this. That you all did all this. And I appreciate that. So, you know, I'm ready to move forward, and if we need to move forward still, we can move forward still.
I hear what you're saying, and I agree with it. You know, we have a situation, it's give and take. I think I said this before we even did this. Two things, I want to comment first. I just found recent -- found out recently that St. John's will test the wetlands and in some cases say it serves no purpose. It's not a recharging, it's just holding water. And they will let you -- they will sign it over to be filled. So, I think that's the test you're talking about. And I was unaware of that, and I found that out, that those cases do exist, and St. John's tests for that. So that's great. I think we've made progress, I really do. Is it perfect? As I told you at the beginning, I think we're not going to agree on everything. I understand that. You have one point of view. We're trying to do the best as we can with the science and the people we hire and so forth to make it work for everybody. There is, I would be foolish to tell you we don't want growth. We do want growth. I think you want growth. Because without growth, people won't move here. We won't be able to get well-paying jobs for our offspring, and they'll have to move away. We have jobs coming in all the time now out at the Cape, and they're permanent jobs, well-paying jobs, because we're out of Department of Defense now. We're into private businesses who are building massive buildings out there. I just did a tour of Blue Horizon the other day, and it's, I think, 780,000, and they're in the process of doubling it. Twenty -- 780,000 feet, square feet, and huge, and they're in the process of doubling. So, we want those people coming in. We don't want to destroy the environment. We want to keep it as good as we can, certainly. But there's going to be disagreement as to when it's -- we can't leave it just pristine because there has to -- there doesn't have to be development, but there should be some development so the community can grow and have the things people tell us they want, you know, more restaurants, more entertainment, more this, more that, to make it a viable community for everybody. Some people, that's their, you know, that's their desire. So, there's never going to be a time we're going to agree on everything. I just, I think, though, however, staff has really tried on this one, and I'm certainly in favor of it. Member Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just clarification from you, Peggy. Based on Member Nelson, there were some modifications that you agreed to add to this, correct?
I didn't agree, but no, I'm not. I believe that it was recommended that it say, this would be in both two and three, that the soils would be certified by a qualified professional engineer or professional geologist or geotechnical engineer. I believe that language was what was discussed.
Okay.
Member Nelson commented about concern that the retention ponds would be properly positioned and distributed throughout the development site to allow for maximum aquifer recharge. That's the language recommended in number four. The issue about retention ponds not allowing seepage is in number seven. The language about the wetlands, as we talked about, those are determined by the Water Management District on a site-specific basis. And there is also language in the technical manual about wetland buffers. The language that was proposed, about a minimum of 50% of the dry retention ponds that we relocated in the pre-development area has been recommended to be removed. Because we have already said that we would recommend -- that we want to see maximum aquifer recharge spread throughout the entire area. Again, that one is in number four. So, unless I have completely missed something, I think that the questions or most of the concerns that have been expressed seem to be here. I could miss something.
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing on section four, when you talked about the retention ponds shall be positioned, properly positioned, and distributed throughout the development. Is there a negative to that at all that we have to worry about as far as development is concerned? I mean, who determines if it's properly positioned, I guess is the question.
Well, I can't speak for the developer to identify the negatives, but I will say that this, the idea of this sort of goes to what Mr. Johnson alluded to, is that, you know, you want to make sure that they're not on the edges of the development.
Right, right.
And so, but as far as developer impacts, I'd probably have to give that over to Peggy to see if she has an opinion on that.
Well, I see the comments here, so I assume, since these were your comments, then you can live with your comments.
Yeah, staff is very supportive of the idea that these are properly positioned and distributed. It's consistent with the BFA report recommendations. And we feel that it's very uncommon for retention in an area with this much topography change. Because remember, we're talking about areas that have above 25 feet and below 25 feet. That's where this standard is all put in. Above, if all the property's below 25 feet, there's one standard. If all the properties below 20 -- above 25 feet, there's another standard. So this is only those areas where there's a lot of topography change.
All right.
So, I frankly, knowing that you can only change the topography eight feet, you're not going to see a lot of retention in one area.
Right, right.
Unless there's a very small area above 25 feet, they bring it down eight feet and it's, you know, kind of smoothed out. But we're talking about a very limited number of sites that have that kind of topography change.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, are we at a position where we can make a motion or are we still in discussion?
No, certainly not.
Okay.
I'll ask for a motion, okay?
Okay.
Any other council discussion? All right, I will close the public hearing, but before I ask for a motion, I have a statement I'd like to read. In this process, something has become apparent. Boards, the P and Z in particular, as with other boards, is an advisory board to the city council. Note that word, advisory board. City council takes recommendations from P and Z, along with information provided by subject matter experts, consultants, and our professional planning staff and the public. And then renders a decision. That decision is a final decision, this decision we're making tonight. It's not a debate between us and the P and Z or any other board. They advise us, we listen to them, we listen to y'all, we listen to all of the experts, and then we make our decision. It's not a debate. And that's, you saw before, I'm very conscious of the rules we're under. I want to make sure everybody else is. So, thank you. With that, I will accept a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt the ordinance as recommended by staff with the changes that I guess we agreed on in principle.
Yes, sir. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I can use a second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, Walt, please, clerk.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, please. Where are we? Oh, yeah.
Next item is 10A, which is ordinance's first reading. Ordinance number 38, 2019, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances, amending chapter three fire alarms, specifically amending section 311 definitions and 312 duty of owner or less of premises regarding cancellation of alarms, definition of false alarms, and maintenance of alarm systems, provided for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, exemptions, and incorporation into the code.
And Mayor and Council, this is your first reading of ordinance 38, 2019. Chief Woodward standing by. Should you have any questions about this particular ordinance? It'll be your second reading, it'll be at your next meeting.
Counsel, any questions of staff? Are there any cards on this?
Yes.
That's all we have to do then. All business, there is none. New business. I see none. Geocentric report from, I don't know what that is about. I have a note there. But petitions and requests from the public? Where'd they go? Mayor and council reports, you have my report in the agenda package. Council reports, anyone like to make a report? Oh, we have to. How about that? It's you.
It's me. I thought I talked enough tonight.
No, you didn't. Just got to do it according to the rules.
Okay. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Scott. We have metal straws.
But you got to put them in the dishwasher, huh?
We have. Yes, we have to put them in the dishwasher. But I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Stauffer and the Water Department for my metal straw. I'm very excited.
You excited?
Yes.
Oh, I was trying to get the cap off. It's not a cap. It's a suction thing.
Wait a minute. Okay, how do you use it?
You suck on it, it's got to hold it.
Oh, she thought you'd leave it in there?
No, you take it out as plastic.
So the next version will include instructions on how to use the straw?
Can I get instructions on this one?
Yeah, here, I'll write them down for you.
Okay.
Look, see?
Okay.
Yeah, you got it. Okay.
Okay, can we get instructions? Thanks, Mike.
No problem. Vice Mayor, sir. That must have been from before. We'll take that. Member Jordan?
Yeah, just one thing. I am proud to say, I guess every year we're supposed to take the ethics training, and I was pleased to be able to go down to Melbourne and actually the attorney for the school board and also the assistant attorney for the county commission actually put that on. And they did an excellent job. I really didn't want to go to the thing, but they did it in a way that made it fun. So, I got my four hours done, so I'm so happy.
Yeah, I generally go to them every year. I didn't this year because I had to do it online because of time constraints. But I find them very informative. Every time, something else comes up and I said, "Really?", you know? So, it is a good process. I did the one down in South Proward on the beach there. Forgot which city it is, but anyway, yeah, I agree with you. Okay, any other council reports? City manager?
Yes, sir. One action item for council. It's customary for the city council to cancel the regularly scheduled meetings on the fourth Tuesday of December. This year, the meetings fall on Christmas Eve, which is 24 December 2019. It would be appropriate for council to vote on whether or not to cancel the council meetings on December 24, 2019.
Instead of having it on Christmas Eve?
Up to you, sir.
What do you think? So, would somebody, yes, sir. You have your light on?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we cancel the December 24 meeting.
Certainly.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Certainly do.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
You bet.
I have several, yes, sir, several information items for you. The follow-up on the legislative priorities, Housing Rehab Program Activities Report. And also, I'm happy to report that the mayor, Chief Woodward and I attended the last Tyco Airport Authority Board where council's recommendation to take a look at the establishing partnership between the Tyco Airport Authority and the city of Titusville to operate the fire station located on Space Coast Airport. They approved that. So we will begin negotiations and begin working out the details for that, which would present us the A-Southside Fire Station and present the Tyco and Space Coast Regional Airport a fully manned 24-hour operation on their airfield.
It was a clear win-win to everyone. We, I mean, they needed to get a fully staffed firehouse. They had a building with one person in it, and that would not, that's not enough to cover it. So on occasions, we or the county would cover them. In addition, we needed a building down there on the south end of town to protect our citizens and have it closer to a firehouse as we're expanding down there and building down there. So it was a win-win, and they very readily accepted, and we were very happy to see that.
Yes, sir. And just, so, just for council's expectations, this is not going to happen overnight. It will take us several years to bring ourselves to a 24/7 operation. And, you know, the good news on that is Willow Creek is our first development on Southside that has residential construction going on. So, I think the timing of your decision to move forward to take a look at that is absolutely perfect. With the Titusville Talking Points, the October 2019 edition, I just want to highlight, and again, this is such a great document that's done in-house, and those two super employee of the month, Curtis and Shane and Jim, are those two fellows primarily pulled this together, and staff does do the input to it, but it's a great document. And one of the suggestions made about six, seven months ago was to, with all the discussion about Chick-fil-A and other dining opportunities within Titusville, how many restaurants do we actually have in Titusville?
Ooh, ooh, I know.
And we have 111 places where you can eat in Titusville. And so we've put an insert in here that shows where those locations are and where the dining opportunities are in our city. So I think it's a great, great tool. We've gotten wonderful feedback on that. Several other cities are looking at doing it and wondered how we did it, which is also very rewarding to hear that from other, from our peer cities.
I just want to add to it, and I'm sure you guys do the same thing, I distribute that to various, where I get my haircut and the doctor's office and everything. And they ask me every time I come in, which isn't every month. Not yet. Not yet, anyway. But, you know, they, they ask, this is a new one out, it's new and out, and staff does a wonderful job on it. I don't, I don't know who does all the infill and all the, the writing and so forth, but yes, you...
Yes, sir, it, it's our staff, and we have a process that brings that together every quarter on the fifteenth of the month. And then, like I said, those three men that you saw today pull it together and do the artistic, to make the document a professional document.
It's just amazingly good, is all I have to say. It's, I don't know how else to describe it. So, we, we, I appreciate it, I'm sure counsel, I know the community, the community really appreciates it, because they, they just love to go through and find out that there's a new Popeyes coming in and so forth, which we couldn't do if we went door to door.
Oh, I will say, if I put, I know Scott has the same problem, if you put five or ten in the lobby of the condos...
Oh, yeah.
By the time you go up and come back down, they're gone.
They're gone, they're gone.
They're gone, everybody's...
We may have to print a few more.
I know.
Yes, sir, and, and of course, the, the document is available online, both PDF form and we have a flip form, so you can, you know, just look through it and flip through it. And we, we are noticing that real estate agents are using it, the electronic version, sending the information to prospective clients and saying, hey, this is a good recruiting tool to bring people to our city that are interested in it.
And it's online as, as well.
It is online, absolutely.
So it gets quite a distribution when it comes right down to it.
So with that concludes my portion, sir.
I, I just want to say thank you for instituting that, because I know it was your baby, and it's, it's really worked out tremendously.
We've got a great team to pull together. Thank you very much, sir.
Anyone else? I see none. I will declare this meeting adjourned.